Good open, regular meeting up. That's our public hearing, number one. Silo, lot line, number 27, 29, merged subdivision site and approval. Public hearing is now open. Is there any public comment?
I just wanted me a comment. Nina Peake and I visited the site and we looked at it as an improvement, actually. And I think that I didn't see any aberrations. It seemed to be within all the conformities of the project. I don't know what Nina's thoughts are on it. No thoughts, okay?
I have one question. Is it appropriate for us to ask for the minutes of the HOA showing that they approved the, this project, the lot line split? Because my understanding from residents at Silo is they have never been notified of HOA meetings.
There'd be no harm in making that request and we can certainly reach out to the HOA. I'm not sure what the notification requirements are within the HOA relative to projects that are before the design committee.
The reason I ask is because I've been told that they don't recall the last time there was an HOA meeting. And with the recent change in the management structure of Silo, I want to make sure that everything is consistent with the requirements of their HOA.
Perhaps, I don't know if the applicant may be able to speak to that. We are aware that there was approval by the design committee for Silo Ridge. And I guess I would defer to the applicant. They may be able to shed some light on this.
Hey, how are you? Juan Torres from Stoneleaf Construction on behalf of the client.
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Juan, last name Torres, on behalf of the client with Stoneleaf Construction. Yes, the application was submitted over a year ago to the Design Review Committee, which is the entity under the HOA that reviews compliance with the design guidelines for the community.
And the HOA is aware, was aware of this when this request was made? My understanding is they haven't had a meeting or members have not been notified of meetings. Person who told me this could maybe not have checked their emails or they could have missed it, but people who told me this. So I just want to make sure this is indeed the community's voice that says this is okay.
So, under the HOA, the DRC is the one that ensures compliance for design and compliance with the guidelines of the community. The HOA meets quarterly and then they have public meetings with members of the community once a year. There's calls held every year.
So would this appear in the minutes of the HOA meeting?
I am not positive. I'd have to confirm.
I think it's...
This is handled, if I may, this is handled by, as Juan said, the Design Review Committee. It wouldn't go to the, necessarily to the full HOA. And there are, there were submitted for the record, DRC comments, both final preliminary and minutes of several meetings, including the one at which they adopted, they authorized the design, if you will. So they exist in our records. There might have been a submittal from me, Nina, that got circulated.
Yeah.
Well, it was circulated. I don't, I'll make sure it goes out again. But we did receive all those documents and they were circulated for review.
When we went out to the site visit with Amanda, she's, I think you just said that the HOA assured compliance, or the Design Review Committee assured compliance. When we went out on the site visit, Amanda told us that it did not comply, the size of the house did not, and the design of the house did not comply with the design regulations. It was significantly exceeded the size. And we've talked about that, right? There was a maximum footprint approved of 3750 when the proposed house is something on the order of 12,000 feet. And so it was indirect non-compliance with the design, the approved design documents for the whole, for the Lake District.
So it was approved in compliance by the Design Review Committee. The MDP and the bulk design standards allowed lot coverage up to 70% as was studied for three different homes that were scheduled for the site. The one home right now, lot coverage is down to 45%. The footprint of this one house is actually smaller than the three footprints that will be developed by three homes with three patios, with three pools, with three driveways and three garages. So based on that, it was determined to be in compliance by the DRC. The DRC did approve the design after a year going back and forth. The DRC and the minutes you can go through actually required the client to lower the height of the house, making the house one and a half stories tall rather than two and a half stories, which is kind of the standard at Silo, and working with them to make the masses be broken into multiple structures rather than one big structure.
Yeah, I thought it was my understanding because you're combining, what, three lots? And each one of those could comply with 3,500 square, that the combined sum of the houses would exceed, or not exceed, the 12,000. Is that my understanding, or?
My understanding under the bulk design standards is the maximum lot coverage can be up to 70%.
Okay.
In each lot. There were three lots. Right now, the lot coverage is down to 45%. There's less, three lots.
Yeah, it was two lots, sorry.
But they eliminated...
They eliminated one.
They eliminated one.
But it was, from my understanding, agreed at 3,750 per lot, that's three lots. That's still less than 15,000 square feet, which is what I thought was proposed. I could be wrong.
The proposal is 15,000 square feet, yes, but in terms of impervious surfaces is less. There's less bedrooms. It's twelve bedrooms versus fifteen bedrooms.
Square footage is 12,956. That's the ground coverage. It's got one and a half stories, so it goes up.
I think what we're wrestling with is the magnitude of a 12,000 square foot house. That's what we're wrestling with. And it's something that you can understand that we don't have many houses like that in the community. And we're trying to understand how does a community that has smaller houses throughout it suddenly builds something two or three times bigger? And our concern is that we comply with our comprehensive plan, which talks about just maintaining the character of the community and the importance of maintaining the character of the community. And when you look at the community of Silo Ridge, which is stunningly beautiful, it's also all of a certain scale. And now you want to triple the scale of one building. That does not keep, that starts to feel like it's throwing a community out of balance. And it sure can be within regulations, but that is just a concern, more of an existential concern, if you will.
So, to those points, two points to note. One, the DRC took a very hard look at the house and ensured that the house itself looks as a breakup of different masses. It's not one mass. It's multiple masses, all combined and put together in a way that makes it seem...
What does that mean, multiple masses?
So rather than having one large mass as a house, one big house that's two stories, you have a breakout of the garage, a breakout of a smaller portion, then a connector that connects to another structure and then another as well. So it's four masses connecting, making up the house. It's not one big mass. On top of that, as a member of the community, living in the town of Aminia, I am aware that our community has homes and multiple roads that are 10, 15, 20, 30, 40,000 square feet. So while they're not the norm, they do form part of our community. And while I don't believe this house to be the norm, it does form a, form part of the community and form part of Silo Ridge. I don't think that we're going to see very many people buying three lots, combining them and building the house. It's probably a one-off. But it does comply and it's in keeping with some of the homes that we see in our community. If we go up to Smithfield Valley Road, you go up to Tower Hill Road, you go up to other areas in our communities, there's large homes around.
Right, those large homes are on 50, 60, 70 acres, some of them.
Understandably so.
Is there any other public comments?
Yeah.
You guys go to the right.
About what Juan, is it Juan? Sorry. What Juan was just talking about.
First, your name.
My name's Craig Miley, lifelong resident, I don't know, 58 years now. So my question is, so they want to combine three lots into one, build this massive house. And I believe this is up near Keene Stud, right? Is this my understanding?
No.
No, this is at Silo Ridge? Okay. But still, I mean, how visible is it from coming down Delverne Hill? You know, I mean, so what I'm getting at is, we're all going to look at it, you know, I mean, you know, you can talk about Smithfield Valley and some big homes up there. And like you pointed out, I mean, they're on 50, 60 acres. A lot of them are kind of in the woods. I mean, yeah, you see them from the road, but they're kind of secluded, so. And also, I mean, would this also require to get a variance through like the zoning board or anything like that? You know, I mean, in the sense of the footprint that is...
No, it meets the requirements, dimensional requirements. It's only site, site plan review from the planning board that's required.
Okay.
And also, knowing the property, you don't particularly see this house from Delverne. I mean, there's other properties you certainly would if you built a house the size, but this one is, just where it's situated is not particularly visible.
May I, Craig? You know, we, I went to the site and I had the same question you did about the visibility. It's actually a step down from the houses behind it. So if you're going to see anything, you're going to see the houses that already are established. I did have a question about the utilities when we were there. They do their own sewage treatment, so, yeah. You know, I had some real questions when I went there and Amanda pretty much satisfied my concerns at the time, so.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Martin Gejon. I'm the attorney for the owner of the two lots. And this is now the third time that we've come before the board and we appreciate, you know, all of the concerns and we've worked very, very hard to address all of the concerns. We've been compliant in a timely fashion, as is the wish of the owner. She wants to comply with whatever is required. But the first two hearings that we had on this issue, there was much discussion about the size of the house, as there is today. And it was mentioned in prior hearings that the reason that this merger is before the board is not to decide whether the house is acceptable or not. It's that the disturbance of the land, being over 10,000 square feet, requires that the merger be considered by the board. That's the merger of the land, not necessarily the size or the specifications of the house itself. Now, in terms of the size and the specifications of the house, it's not visible from the roadway. It's not, it's, it's, it's hard to even, I was just at the site a few minutes ago. It's not even that visible once you drive deeply into Silo Ridge. And the only effect that it will have in terms of aesthetics is in the Silo Ridge community itself. And the Silo Ridge community has spoken through the DRC and said, "This home will comply." So with all respect, we're talking about the size of the house, but the size of the house is really not germane to the merger of the land. What is germane to the merger of the land is that there's actually less impact on this land, once that it's merged, by virtue of having one house on it as opposed to three.
Any other public comment out there, on this matter? Board comments?
Just for the record, I just want to review a few things. There are two actions in front of the board. One is a minor subdivision. The other one is a site plan approval for a single-family lot. They have submitted a plat, which generally complies with requirements for a minor subdivision plat. The site plan that they did submit is sufficient to allow a proper review. And if you recall, both of those submissions were required to be in by a certain time so that we could hold this public hearing and make those time frames. The, most of the comments in our prior review memorandum have been satisfactorily resolved. And anyway, typically, the ones that remain unresolved would be conditions of any final subdivision approval. In other words, the owner's consent note would need to be signed and dated on the date of last revision. We will need permission to file from the Duchess County Department of Health, the survey or certification, and then typically, and Paul and I are discussing, we'll probably talk with their attorney as well, a consolidation need that may have already been filed. But other than that, the site plan approval, because it is within the Silo Ridge community and it does comply with the master development plan bulk regulations. And as much as we'd like to say that the master development plan had identified house sizes, which it did, they were not put in the bulk regulations. So in other words, what was put in the bulk regulations were side yards, rear yards, front yards, percentage of coverage, and other things. And in this particular case, they treated, the Design Review Committee treated this lot as they would treat one of the estate lots, which did a higher level of scrutiny than the standard lots, because this is a, one of the communities that, basically the standards were all relatively the same. So they reviewed this as an estate lot. They required special stormwater management features. They required a few other things on this lot, which would not ordinarily be required for a lot in the Lakeside Lot District. So as a consequence, what, the way the documents have been written, is so long as they demonstrate approval, and I understand your point about seeing the minutes, demonstrate approval of the Silo Design Review Committee, then the lot is deemed, and doesn't invalidate any of the bulk regulations, the lot is deemed to comply. So, and typically speaking, this would be the first single-family home in the Silo community that would obtain site plan approval. All the other ones, as long as they comply with the guidelines and stick within the envelope, they pass go, they collect their $200.
And if I may, I believe that the setbacks actually increased. They doubled, they virtually doubled.
When you combine lots, there isn't provision in that they double the...
I'm sorry. When you combine lots, they double the side yards. So instead, the normal side yard is 7.5, the side yards used in the design of this lot were 15. That would be it, Mr. Chairman.
And I have not much to add. John kind of stole my thunder. You know, we are looking at subdivision approval because of the merger of the lots. That's something that is really necessary so that there's notice to the public and, you know, part of the record in Duchess County files that the original subdivision approval that was granted by the planning board and the original plats that have been filed have been modified. And so that takes care of that issue. The site plan amendment issue, you know, Silo Ridge is not in front of us. They are not the applicant. They've sold this land to the property owner. And the, you know, if it were, if it wasn't such a material change from what was originally contemplated by the site plan resolution, the applicant wouldn't even need to obtain site plan review. Because it is a substantial change, we're looking at it as an amendment that does require planning board approval. But again, as John pointed out, you have the Silo Ridge Design Committee. They have primary responsibility for that review. That's not to say that this is just an administrative exercise for the planning board. And, you know, our, two of our members went out there and looked at it. And I think the sentiment is that there aren't any, you know, significant impacts, you know, that come along with this in terms of environmental, visual, that sort of thing. So what John and I had talked about is for your next meeting, we can prepare draft approval resolutions for consideration by the board. And those could be adopted at the August meeting if the board is of a mind to do so.
Is that being said, is there another public comment? Public hearing now closed.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second, Matt.
Later.
Aye. If I may, for the record, Mr. Chairman, you are closing both public hearings because you opened two. You're closing two, subdivision and site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I may hold a few on the procedure. If we're talking about drafting resolutions, that means the next step would be exactly the plan.
We would, we'll prepare approval resolutions. The board's August meeting is August 14.
14.
And at that meeting, it would be presented to the board beforehand. We can provide copies to you all beforehand. And if the board is so inclined, they can approve them at that time. And then the follow-on conditions and then approval, as John indicated, for the subdivision. It's primarily, there is already a consolidation need, checking that box. If there isn't one, I would take a limit on that. But, you know, it's pretty basic conditions. I'm not sure that there would be much in the way of conditions relative to the site plan, covering, making sure that all of the equipment is okay to be done.
Moving on to the next public hearing. We'll be trucked back after reuse, phases two and six site plan approval. Truckback's adaptive use, phase two and six site plan approval.
And that should probably be a condition.
He wants us to leave the mics on.
I won't say any bad words.
Okay. I'll try not to. Down and purchase.
Where?
Down and purchase.
Oh. But you have the house up here.
Yeah, right in top, south of the light.
All right, the public hearing is now open. First person on the agenda is...
Jim Flaherty.
Jim Flaherty, step up.
Are we doing a presentation?
Mr. Chairman, did you want a brief presentation first?
Public hearing.
Got it.
We're doing a public hearing.
Public hearing.
So no, no presentation to the public?
All right, the president...
If people have questions, then you guys can come up and present. But we're just continuing the public hearing.
Okay, I mean, we're prepared to do a presentation, but...
Yeah, that's cool. No worries.
We'll answer questions then.
Yeah. James, where are you?
Jim Flaherty?
Yeah.
You're number one.
You're number one, correct.
I'm Jim Flaherty, a very near neighbor of Truckback and obviously very familiar with Truckback. I am not a member of their planning board, nor am I on their board of directors. I only know Truckback from its history. But I do know the champalimoes and how they plan. And I know that their plans were, are always done beyond the realms of, they are always within the realms of the best taste possible. They are not building a storage facility for bricks. They are going to build something that is beautiful and that will enhance the whole area. So whatever Truckback is doing, I know it's good and good for Aminia, as it always has been.
That's Rose, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, so I have to put on my different hat. My resident hat, okay? So, you know, I have a lot of hats I wear. So Rosanna Ham, resident of the town of Aminia. I wanted to say that back in the very beginning, I was very much against this project. And having, and actually started all of my involvement in the town and coming to planning boards and all of, and running for the town board. And in listening to all of this and the development of this project, I have to say that I'm very appreciative of the responsiveness that Truckback has had to the community. There have been a lot of changes, I feel, that were made as a result of hearings like this. A lot of the things that I heard at the first public hearing were concerned about the water. I know that they've cut back on the restaurant, which is going to save water. People were concerned about the traffic. They've done things, you know, to try to alleviate some of the traffic. And so I, and I, and the fact that the Delmonde House is going to be restored authentically, I find, I think is amazing, and I think that's a wonderful thing. So I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to thank Truckback for, for listening and I wish them luck.
Meeting?
Good evening. So, I have been a resident of Aminia for 55 years. I've been on Leedsville for 55 years. So I still have some concerns about the project, because I still feel that it's a huge project with, yes, it's been decreased and the water usage. But, you know, some of my concerns are making sure that, you know, someone brought up to me just last night or this morning, how the traffic's going to go in and out, especially during construction. Because it's really, anywhere that you go in and out of Truckback, it can be a challenge, especially Yellow City Road to 343, going from Truckback to Leedsville Road on both entrances. So one of my main concerns is safety of the residents of Aminia as well as the construction workers. Because to me, that's an important part of this project. There's going to be a lot of moving parts, a lot of different people coming in and out. So that's something I would want to have a major concern, you know, making sure we look at that thoroughly. And like I said, you know, construction, I understand that projects are going to start and there's going to be a lot of construction noise. And it's really important to remember that, you know, people do work. So for example, on Leedsville Road, we do work. And it's really important to keep that in mind, you know. Sometimes projects run a little bit late and then they want to stay. Well, can we stay till seven, eight, nine, 10? You know, and it's really important to remember that there are other people in the area. One of the things that really annoyed me most about this project is, you know, I felt like I heard about it third-hand. I would have appreciated if Truckback had come to the residents on Leedsville Road and the Truckback community and talked to us beforehand. I'm not saying, you know, hold my hand, but, you know, have, have a, have a meeting of the people that are within one mile of your, of your area and just saying, "Hey, we're going to start this project. This is what we want to do." And have an open conversation. going to start this project, this is what we want to do, and have an open conversation. Sometimes, you know, yes, it went through the planning board and, and all the others, but it would just be nice to have a neighborly conversation of, hey, we want to do this, what do you think? And maybe we could, you know, come to a different solution quicker. So those are just my thoughts and concerns. So thank you.
Hello, my name is George Bestrantzen. I live at 3498 Route 343 in Armenia. I'm just before the scenic route of 343 that goes from my house basically to the Connecticut line. And I, I hope that you take that scenic route very seriously and, and all the regulations that go with the scenic route, that those are respected. It's important to my well-being, I think. I did send you all a link to a website about the Delamater House, and I'm very pleased that work is beginning on it. I visited it last winter and it was in a lot of trouble. And I visited it a week ago, and it's even in more trouble. So as soon as the work can begin to do it, I would be great. I, I hope no corners are cut. It's a prestige building for Tropak and it's a prestige building for this community. I did also want to say that as you go forward with these phases with Tropak, please keep in mind that Tropak is right in the middle of a habit of an animal throughway. A lot of, there's a lot of.
Migration.
Thank you. So please keep that in mind. I think that, I don't know what's, I haven't followed too closely. Maybe the project has shrunken enough that it won't matter. But I, I hope it doesn't, it isn't too big to affect that aspect. The other thing I want to mention is that culturally, this property is connected with Myron Benton, who I think should be our poet laureate. He wrote Songs of the Webatuck, which take place sort of at Tropak farm that he lived His philosophy is very close to Theroux's. I think Tropak is our Walden Pond. And I would just think if there's a development at Walden Pond, that you would want to read Theroux's Walden Pond. And I think if you haven't read already, I'm going to give you a copy of Songs of the Webatuck. I think it's important that you read this before you make decisions about what goes on at Tropak. I'll give this to Judy.
Is there any other public comment? For you to speak. That's fine. Okay. I refer to you, John.
Here again, at the last meeting, I, the last time you were here was June 12th. We did, I did issue a comment memo. They did issue responses again at the request of the board in a timely fashion. I'm pretty pleased to report that the comments contained in my review memorandum have been generally resolved. There's some minor editorial and, you know, typical drafting glitches that need to be corrected. But substantively, they've addressed my concerns and I have no other issues other than I will get them a list of minor edits, but pretty much they've done what they, they were asked to do.
And from my end, what I did do, and this was in anticipation of the August meeting, I provided the board with some of the background documents that the new members may not have seen and that other members may want to revisit. That basically provided the special use permit resolution, the seeker negative declaration that was issued by the board for the entire special use permit and also encompassing phase one of the site plan. And then I also provided the background documentation, seeker documentation that Tropak had supplied the board in support of its application prior to its approval. So I've revisited all of those documents. My task was, is to provide a sort of a seeker assessment that, that builds on the work that the Tropak consultants have already done for phases two and six. My initial analysis is really that these phases, although they're modified, do, are consistent with the prior seeker negative declaration that was made by the board. I note in particular the positives mentioned by others relative to the Delamater House, the reduction of the number of units of rooms that will occur, which is accompanied by a reduction in the amount of wastewater that will be generated with respect to the historic renovations. They have obtained sign off from SHPO that's been provided to the board, so you have that. The other thing that really stands out for me is that because there are concerns about the potential visual impacts of the project, the fact that they've taken a new look at the, the phasing so that they can get some of the construction areas opened up, but also at the same time plant along the road and do that sooner so that those, that vegetation can grow taller by the time they actually build the buildings behind it. I think that's another positive. So what John and I had talked about is if the board's of a mind to close the public hearing tonight, and he can get the final details that he's talking about ironed out with Tropak for the August meeting, I can provide an assessment, a seeker assessment and, you know, draft resolutions, a draft resolution of approval for the board for its consideration along with site plan findings for its August 14th meeting.
Any questions, concerns, any board members?
Just a statement.
All right.
I know there were a number of concerns by residents of the community, one having to been the hydrological issues, and we did an intensive study. And we showed that it really would not have an impact on the homes around the area. I concur with what you're saying, our attorney. I also want to point out that there's a concern about fragmentation of migration. But there is a very large conservation easement on the property itself, which would deter any blockage of migration, I would think. So they assured us also that there would be no wastewater damage to the Tropak's stream, that everything would be handled appropriately. So we've been playing with this now for almost a year now, maybe even longer. And, well, I've only been on the board for a year or so.
That's a long time.
So the one thing I neglected to do was like, I would like to visit the, the site because sometimes seeing it and feeling it changes one's perspective on, on, on issues. So I'd like to make an arrangement with you to come and visit the site and maybe you can show me. Because what I'm seeing is, is there's a lot of improvements occurring. And there's some preservation of some of the old historic buildings there, so if that's all right, I'd like to do that.
Mr., I'm sorry, when, when it's my turn?
You first.
Thanks. John, I was hoping, so there was a bunch of additional information that was requested at the June 12th public hearing. And if you, and I think you said that we've pretty much gotten everything. Can you, can you just run through the list of additional information that was requested and, and just confirm that it's all in the package? Because there's a couple of things that I don't think, I know I didn't see, and I think maybe one of them is the visual impact analysis. We had asked for sort of the change, what this was going to look like versus what was already modeled back in January, but I don't.
I can, I, I can tell you what they submitted.
Okay.
I don't have a full listing of what was requested, but what they submitted, they did, they did address my concerns. I had some concerns about wastewater.
Right.
Because they substantially reduced the wastewater loading by eliminating the restaurant.
Yeah.
They went from over a thousand gallons a day down to 220. So they submitted documentation to that.
Yeah.
We asked for a truck maneuvering exhibit, showing how trucks would enter and exit the site. They, and how they would particularly get to the back of the manor house. They submitted that. That's one of the things that I'd like them to tweak a little bit. But it substantially shows that depending upon how the trucks come in, they can easily get to where they need to be and back in and do what they got to do without too much trouble. If you recall, we had modified, they had modified some of the parking along, I think it's Yellow City Road. And we had asked for some cross-sections and some demonstrations that the headlights would not intrude on, on the exterior of the site. They did provide us with the cross-sections. They did provide us with an updated layout of that area. And basically what it shows is they're going to restore a 20, an 18 to 24 inch high stone wall. There's a slight berm behind it, and then they're cutting in the parking lot so that the headlights of most of the cars are going to be anywhere from 12 to 18 inches below the top of what's there. And they didn't, they didn't really show the plantings, but they did show the plantings. So they, they didn't take a lot of credit for the plantings. They basically took that. They completely submitted updated site plans, and they gave us updated, an updated elevation view of the improvements to the manor house. And then particularly the back-loading area, because everybody was kind of interested in what that would look like. They also made some improvements and addressed some of our concerns with regards to the contractor's storage yard. They showed that they, they are going to supply temporary electric to the trailer. It appears to be overhead, but I'm, I'm not quite sure. That's one of the things I need clarified. They are not supplying water and sewer to that. They are using temporary porta-potties, et cetera. They have an area located outside, inside the fence to protect it. And then we asked for an estimate of how many cars might park there. They submitted a demonstration that they could easily accommodate 21 cars with a lot left over from maneuvering, unloading, et cetera. When it came to the Delamater House, we had asked for some clarifications with regards to lighting, which they provided us. We asked for some clarifications. There was a major parking lot across the street that at one point in time was going to be done. That's been taken out of this phase and moved to a later phase when it's more appropriate. So they've reduced the impacts to that. And then Paul had asked for the updated landscaping. They did adjust their landscaping layout. They took into account the drainage and a few other things. I don't think they updated the cross-sections through there, but that was the only, and it wasn't clear whether they were going to do that or not. But for the most part, those were the matters that they submitted, and that was what they addressed. I hope I covered everything.
Pretty much everything except days and times where refuse pick up.
That's in there?
Okay. Speedy.
It's Tuesdays and Fridays, I think, and it's in the afternoon, actually. It's kind of an anomaly. But it's more common for restaurants to be picked up in the afternoon than it is the AM.
Okay. And the delta, the difference between the visual impact from the two view sheds from the original proposal and the new proposal? Which I think there's, it's something in our packet.
Yes. I think you got something tonight, but.
But it's not, it's not new.
It's in there tonight, yeah.
Right. It's to demonstrate and show you that what was originally submitted in the ARP is what you're still going to see for phase two, so there is no delta.
Okay.
It is what you see, and that's in the packet. We could put it on the screen if you wanted to see it as well, too.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
So the idea is putting the landscape into phase two, all the landscaping along Route 343. That will start to shield out any of the views of the, the future development in the later phases. So we get that early growth. But what we're talking about in phase two is putting that small contractor staging area. So that would be way in the back here in the, in the foreground. That would have a fence around it, and that fence is also screened. But we, we plant these, the trees, the orchard trees at the same time. So that's the view that you're going to see. And you will not see anything. In, in later phases, buildings are built and you only see the, the rooftop just kind of through the trees.
Okay. I think it would be helpful for this, for the purposes of this, if you swap out the old, you have the old site plan in there, if you swap out that for the new site plan to verify and confirm that this view shed is in fact the same as it would be with the revised plan.
Okay.
That's what you guys, that's basically what you're saying.
But we're only looking at, we're only, this is only looking at phase two right now? This is specific to phase two?
Yeah.
So the only difference is the contractor staging.
Yeah. In point of fact, there are no changes in the subsequent phases. So this landscaping was supposed to be, I want to say in phase six or seven. I forget what, what the number was. And they decided to move it up. And because they got a contractor's yard, it's temporary. So they're not clearing as much if you, they have a, they're doing a reduced level of clearing at this stage just to get the contractor's yard in. And they're actually leaving some trees to screen a portion of it, if you, so I, I don't know if.
I understand.
They might, rather than, rather than swapping out, what I might suggest is they add an additional sheet showing what would be at phase two.
That sounds.
Because that's what you're truly trying to get at.
Correct.
So in other words, Rich, I wouldn't replace what you have already done, but I would take an effort to show what, with the contractor's yard and what happens at phase two, we will see as the trees grow, until you get to that later phase.
In the form of a rendering or, or in the form of a cross-section?
A visual, I mean, I, I think what you're saying is essentially like there's going to be no difference from this view shed for what has already been approved versus what you're proposing right now.
Right.
So I think you need to demonstrate that. And if it's just another image that looks just like this, that has the revised site plan as the inset, just as long as there's something on the record that says, hey, we are maintaining, we're confirming that this is going to look the same as what we had originally analyzed as part of our.
Okay. So you're, you're thinking more or less the profile at the bottom, that when you look from this view.
Yes.
And you look through from 343 instead of the parking lot, which is where we're setting up the contractor yard.
If you put your fence in there, yeah.
We put the fence and then, and then we'll show that everything, the contractor's office is a single-story. The ARP looked at this from a two-story building.
Correct.
So it is, that's what we're saying, the differential is, is zero.
Understand.
But if, so you just demonstrate it, that's all.
Just demonstrate that. I think it was a question that was asked, we need to just close the book on it.
The only other concern I might have is the traffic concern, particularly on 343. The site distance from going east seems to be a problem because you don't have a lot of sight, if you're going to be moving trucks in there.
To, wait, Leedsville and 343 or Yellow City?
From 343 onto Yellow City Road.
Correct.
The site distance there is very, very short. And I, I want, yes, of course it is. I mean, try to make a turn.
You're thinking westbound.
I'm sorry, we're going westbound.
Okay. Yeah, so westbound, that's what we have discussed, and I can point it out here.
Westbound, yes.
Yeah, so westbound.
Thank you, Bob.
Just to orientate everybody, this is 343 at the top of the page. This is Yellow City. This is Leedsville here. So if you're coming west.
Right. From Connecticut.
From Connecticut, the route is to turn into Leedsville and then turn into the new Armenia.
Because you're going to have trucks moving into that area. That's your construction, that's where your construction vehicles are going to be moving in?
This parking lot area, just kind of this, actually this parking lot.
Okay. My, my concern is to have some kind of parameter or some type of person out there, if we're going to be making turns, that it doesn't impact any safety for other vehicles moving along that route. And I don't know how you, I don't know how we could put some kind of a mandate there, but we need, we need somebody on the road slowing traffic down perhaps, if you're going to be moving vehicles into that particular road.
I think what the solution is, is that. I think what the solution is, is that we just put a requirement that, that the contractor has to abide by, but anything coming from the Connecticut side has to come in on Leedsville. And that's the idea of the whole project, actually, that even aside from the contracting side and aside from construction, that the new path of entrance is everything on Leedsville, and anything that were to come onto Yellow City, it enters, um, at the back of the manor house for any deliveries, but then it comes through the site and exits onto Leedsville. So that's the whole theory here, and that's part of what we're introducing and getting done in Phase Two. So we start that new traffic pattern, and that new tech, traffic pattern begins to be learned by all the delivery, uh, trucks, by the staff. Everybody starts to learn that. And then, over time, the hope is that it becomes known also by realigning Spingarm and getting that mapped. We talked about this before, too. We'll get that out to the mapping services, so the GPS is routing people in the correct way. And we don't have the issues of the GPS devices routing people in the wrong directions.
I'm just, I'm very, I'm just concerned about it because.
Well, we are too, that's why.
We've seen a number of accidents over the years, uh, in that area. Uh, it's, they've got a couple of sharp turns, and that particular turn going west is, uh, very, very short, uh, in terms of sight.
You're talking about this one and Yellow City?
Yeah, on, onto Yellow City Road, yeah.
So the, the purpose of everything, of the majority of everything in Phase Two, aside from that landscaping, is to get the traffic away from here, and not have vehicles coming from the west and making that awkward left. It's easy if you're coming from the handle of Amenia, you can make a right. That's easy.
There's enough sight there.
Right. And then the other piece of this, too, in reaction to the, the original public hearing was, we don't want trucks going down Yellow City.
No.
So everything that comes in here has to handle you through the site, and everything is directed back to Leedsville, which part of the connector.
Can I ask a question? The distance from, the distance from 343.
You may.
You may, you have to go up to the.
I live two doors down from Trout Beck.
What is your name, please?
I'm sorry?
What is your name?
Jane Schreiber.
Okay.
I live two doors down from Trout Beck on, on Leedsville Road. So the distance from 343 to your new main entryway for, uh, construction vehicles? What, what are you gonna do when they're all backed up and backed up onto 343? Because if they all arrive generally between, I don't know, six and eight in the morning, there's not that much distance between your new main entrance and 343. So where, where are they gonna wait to turn into your new main entrance?
They would be taking a right-hand turn. Once they're on Leedsville, they'll make a right-hand turn.
I'm not talk, I'm talking about getting them onto Leedsville.
Okay.
How many trucks do you think can line up between your new main entrance and 343?
So what we're expecting is, uh, the contractor will schedule deliveries for a specific time during the day. If they have to be large deliveries, they're gonna have their own flagman. They'll take care of that. What you're gonna have first thing in the morning is up to that 20 to 21 cars of workers that actually drive to the site. So the, the actual trades, the, uh, the physical workers, the people will come in their own personal vehicles.
I don't worry about people and vehicles. I worry about trucks. And I, I understand that you're expecting to get all your, um, your materials up front and in storage, but there will be trucks coming on a daily basis to, uh, deliver additional things to your location, yeah, to the site?
Right.
Okay, so.
And not necessarily daily, but there's gonna be delivery trucks.
Okay, so maybe you can help me, cause you, you know the road, that, I'm told that.
If I might.
Constituents just ask questions to the board, and then the board asks the engineer.
If I might.
So how many feet is it, if you know, from 343 to your new main entrance?
It's the same distance. The new main entrance uses the same entrance as the service entrance now.
How many feet is it from 343?
I guess nothing stopped at 343. The parking lot is, is in, what's the distance from Leedsville? 300, a little bit more than 300.
And how many trucks can line up there to make the turn into the parking lot?
On 343?
No, uh, yes, from 343 onto Leedsville.
You gotta coach.
Yeah.
If, if I might, for one minute, uh, um, I was going to ask the same question as Jim as far as cars coming pretty quickly and coming around the curve or coming up, and I'm concerned about the traffic during the construction period as well. But I think signage, saying construction zone, I think a flagman and being conscious of that when appropriate should answer some of the, some of those problems. Um, also, what I'm hearing is that, um, from some of the speakers, Trout Beck has been a very good neighbor in how they've approached the project, and I commend you on that in addressing the board's concern. But I'm also hearing most of the concerns regarding this project are during the construction phase. And I think that the neighbors, um, are concerned about the safety of their neighbors and the safety of your workers. So I think, you know, if you could summarize perhaps for the neighbors, here's what we're doing, and they could see that you're hearing them, ma, if, if they could see you're hearing them, at least that would, would assuage their concerns.
Well, my, my understanding also is that the construction times will be limited to certain times during the day and end certain times during the day. So we're not talking about, uh, vehicles coming in at five o'clock in the morning and leaving at 10 o'clock at night.
Correct.
Okay.
So to take a step back, um, in the original ARP.
Do you have more mic, please?
We started with a traffic study. Everybody will recall that. So the traffic study looked at, uh, the construction build-out. It looked at the full build-out of the site. So everything started with the traffic study. Um, we developed the traffic pattern and the flow pattern that I've described tonight based on that. So the idea of having that traffic study done first, and that was done by a third-party engineer, um, and I believe, and it's reviewed by John. Everybody's reviewed it. Nobody's disputed it. So that's, that's the basis of everything that we did for traffic flow. So we didn't just pull it out of thin air that we want traffic going to Leedsville. That was done by a separate professional. So the idea is to limit, um, traffic onto Yellow City. It always has been. Um, and to get traffic onto Leedsville because that is the appropriate intersection. It has the appropriate size. It has.
We made a commitment to, with respect, if you're.
You need to use the microphone, please, Anthony.
Okay, pardon. Thank you, sorry. Just, I just wanna remind Rich of one thing, Anthony.
I'm sorry, would you please identify yourself to the audience?
Yes, Anthony Shumpolum of, of Trout Beck. Um, so, uh, during, during the traffic study, correct me if I'm wrong, memory serves, we have a, uh, we are supposed to work with the town of Amenia with respect to, uh, Yellow City Road on the signage, right? There's signage, it's not posted for speed, or it hadn't been for a number of years. We may have actually corrected that already. It should say 25 miles an hour. So I think we're supposed to go down to 15. Um, uh, and on Yellow City Road, there are a number of signs that are supposed to go into place, which of course, it's, it's, that requires a different level of coordination. 343 is a different story, because it's the state. Um, but those, signage is part of the ARP plan, and it does come out of our traffic study, which does exist.
Correct, that's it.
I think you also had, as part of the original discussion of this, that you had a part, a traffic management plan during construction, which also specified how, that you, Trout Beck, were gonna provide to any of your contractors and the folks that are coming to deliver stuff, how they're supposed to get there, what the route that they're gonna take, what time that they're gonna come, right?
911, Dutch County, to make sure that all the addresses were done correctly.
Correct.
We've got a map that shows new addresses for each of the buildings, the street signage correctly. We're telling gentlemen who spend a lot of time driving back and forth to Trout Beck, the alarm goes off all the time. Uh, they, uh, yes.
Yeah.
It's there. It is there, but we should, for anybody who wants to have that conversation, happy to have it.
Yeah, I think it's good for the neighbors here tonight to hear that.
Yeah, it's a great concern of ours.
They haven't been in our pitch.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, so just to kind of close that, the, the technical study was done, and the Leedsville intersection with 343 is the appropriate intersection for that. It has the proper level of service. It has the site distance. It has the sta, the safe stopping, uh, distance. So that is why that is the area that's being used for that.
Okay, thank you.
And just to kind of close the record a little bit here, um, number one, um, the representation has been made. One of the reasons that there's establishing this contractor's yard and in providing temporary office space is they are going to have construction, a construction manager who is going to manage the process of construction. Because not only does it benefit the neighbors, it benefits, um, Trout Beck because they still got an operation to run. Um, couple other things, um, I don't foresee, and I, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, I don't see a lot of trucks stacking here. This is, the phases have been purposely kept relatively small so that they can be accommodated quickly. They are proposing a new entrance there, and they have a throat that, that they've actually now labeled, which is 60 feet from the edge of pavement to, to the fence. So it gives enough for any reasonable truck to get in and off the road, and if they were waiting to come in in the morning and the gate wasn't open, they would be on their site, not the other sites. Um, so I, I, I think we've got to keep in mind here that this is going to be, one of the reasons they phased it, a phased construction which allows for the proper control and management of deliveries and trucks into a site such as this. And I, I don't see the circumstance where you'd get any, um, a, a good construction manager wouldn't let trucks back up on his main highway into the site. So I, I think that's all part of the process, and as long as we get the proper notes and other things in the approvals and on the drawings, we should be fine.
Okay.
Your last thing, Jim Paul? Is that being in the motion to close the public hearing?
Seven.
In second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. Um, Lexi, you have to, you set the, the draft for us.
We can do that.
For Lex Beatty, and, um, we'll take it from there. Okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Lex Beatty, we should read.
Thanks, sir.
Build a role. Okay. Number three on the agenda is Turkey Hollow Corporation Timber Harvest Farm. Four, seven, five, four, Route 44, Dutch County Plan Department Referral Approval.
Can you take a little intercession? We need to.
Oh, sure.
People need to, you know, take care of.
We're back in action. Um, go ahead.
Actually, actually.
I don't really have anything to say.
It should be cut and dry.
Actually, it, it should be relatively straightforward.
Exactly.
They were, they, we were ready the last meeting to, to march this through the approvals.
Yep.
What we were waiting for was, uh, this final sign-off from the county. Uh, that arrived somewhere around March 24th, 2024, and, uh, they finally checked the box that said matter of local concern with no further comment. So the county issue is closed. That enables you to move forward to approvals. The first step, and we had it prepared, you should have received it probably on or about June 12th from Mr. Van Cot. Uh, short environmental assessment form, part two. Um, most of the elements, one through 11, on page one, were checked small or no impact, and I would venture to say that, that each one of them was probably no impact. Um, couple clarifications on the second page to enhance those. Uh, number one, the New York State DEC authorized the use of general permit, GP 023 004, temporary bridges and arch culverts for logging activities on or about March 5th, 2024, a copy of which was provided to the town and entered into the project record. Further, you, um, after much ado, uh, engaged a consulting forester to replace Mr. Prentice. That consulting forester reviewed and accepted the forest management plan submitted on behalf of the project by a letter to the planning board dated May 23rd, 2024, which closes the loophole in your code, which requires, um, either a site plan or acceptance of the, um, forest management plan by a certified, or by the consulting forester, which you now have. So that closes that element. I would submit to you that, um, based on the information provided, that the board is, is free to determine, based on the information analysis and any supporting documentation, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And I would, you would need to adopt that by resolution and then have the, uh.
And we actually were prepared, because it is an unlisted action under SEAKER. We have prepared a negative, draft negative declaration, which has been circulated to the board.
Yes, it has been.
I have it.
We've had for a month or so.
Yeah.
Um, and then we also did a draft, uh, SEAKER resolution that would adopt this negative declaration, um, for, for, uh, the Turkey Hollow Timber Harvest.
So step number one, Mr. Chairman, would be to confirm the Part Two impact assessment and authorize, uh, the chairman to sign it, indicating no adverse environmental impacts associated with the project.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the chairman to sign off on the negative declaration.
Well, no, that's just for the Part Two analysis.
Oh, Part Two.
Need a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Roll call vote. Will, Julie, you want to read it off?
We'll hold running right off here. Hold on a little second.
I can do it.
Mr. Stephanopoulos.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vitiello.
Yes.
Mr. Topolsky.
Yes.
Mr. Boiles.
Yes.
Ms. Peake.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye, aye.
And Mr. Decker.
Yes.
We have a draft resolution, as I said, that would adopt the SEAKER negative declaration, and if you'd like, I can read the now therefore. Now, therefore, be it resolved as follows. The planning board issues a SEAKER negative declaration for the project, concluding that it does not have the potential to result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that an environmental impact statement is not required. And two, the planning board adopts and incorporates herein by reference the attached written negative declaration for the project under SEAKER. And three, the board directs the, the attached negative declaration be filed as required by the SEAKER regulations in 6 MYCRR, section 617.12.
Oh, um, same thing, Julie.
Ready to go?
I got it. Wait, wait, you wanna do it?
I got it. Uh, this is different now. Rob Boiles Jr.
Yes.
Nina Peake, deputy care person.
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos.
Yes.
James Walsh.
Yes.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Kent Topolsky.
Yes.
David Vitiello.
Yes.
And I'll certify that.
Okay.
Okay. Then, lastly, we, uh, have a resolution granting site plan approval for the Turkey Hollow Timber Harvest. And again, I can just jump right to the resolved clauses.
Yes, sir.
Uh, be it resolved, that pursuant, uh, then accordance with the zoning law, New York State Town Law, the planning board hereby conditionally approves the application for timber harvesting pursuant to the zoning law and town law. Uh, the planning board imposes following conditions on the approval of the application granted by this resolution. Prior to the undertaking of the project on the property, a financial guarantee, uh, bond, cash, letter of credit, et cetera, shall be submitted to the planning board in the amount of $5,000 to ensure proper erosion control, stormwater management, reforestation, maintenance, and protection of roads on and off the property from damage relating to the timber harvest, stormwater, or trucking. The guarantee must be approved by the town attorney and town board as to form sufficiency, manner of execution, and surety. Uh, two, confirmation and a remaining comments from the planning board engineer and forestry consultant have been addressed. Prior to undertaking the project on the property, uh, the applicant has paid all fees, including any outstanding invoices from the planning board's consultants. Be it further resolved, that the planning board hereby authorizes the chair to stamp and sign the approved site plans upon the applicant's satisfaction of the conditions set forth above. Be it further resolved, then in accordance with the town zoning law, site plan approval shall expire if the applicant fails to undertake the project. shall expire if the applicant fails to undertake the project, obtain any necessary building permit, or to comply with the applicable conditions of the site plan within 18 months of its issuance. The board may grant a one-time six-month extension. Site plan approval may be revoked if the applicant violates the approval or its conditions, or engages in any construction or alteration not authorized by the approval. Any violation of site plan approval or its conditions shall be deemed a violation of the zoning law and subject to enforcement action. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution shall be filed in the office of the town of immediate town clerk within five days and shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five-day period. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Read off.
The following resolution was voted upon with all members of the planning board voting as follows, Robert Boils Jr., chairperson.
Yes.
Nina Peet, deputy chairperson.
Yes.
John Stephanopoulos.
Yes.
James Walsh.
Yes.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Ken Topolsky.
Yes.
Jamie Vitiello.
Yes.
Ready to go?
Okay, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
It's taken a while, but we finally got it.
Let me know when you're gonna drop off that $5,000 check.
Stop it up your blades.
Yep, we did.
Turkey Hollow Road.
Yes, you are.
So, hi, my name is Chad Munier. My wife, Bambi, and I are land surveyors and we live right in Wausau. And I have with me my clients, Dave and Judy Marshall, and what they propose is a lotline readjustment between the two lots that they currently own. It's on May Lane, getting close to Dover Plains, in the very back of May Lane by the Ten Mile River, and it's for the purposes of retaining more stream frontage, more stream access to the lot that they currently live in, just in case in the future they may sell the second lot, they would retain more of the stream.
John?
Okay, you should have a memorandum from myself dated June 21st, 2024. Just the highlights, the project is located in the suburban residential zoning district. Portions of the involved parcels are located in the stream corridor overlay district and the priority and primary valley bottom aquifer. The zoning district is indicated on the plat, but none of the overlay districts are, so we're gonna have to get that squared away. The project, as we understand it, is a simple lotline realignment between two existing parcels. No physical improvements are proposed, and it should be noted, just for the record, that they're both existing lots of record. Neither of the parcels has frontage on a town, county, or state highway. Both parcels appear to have a deeded right-of-way to use an existing 20-foot right-of-way for ingress and egress to New York State Route 22, and that's, that highway is kind of identified as May Knoll, it kind of changes in and out, but the action that's in front of you does not alter that in any way, shape, or form, so it has no impact on that right-of-way. Lotlines are minor subdivisions, it needs to be processed as a minor subdivision, that means it requires a public hearing. I believe the application to be substantially complete, so we take no exception to the planning board scheduling a public hearing at your convenience. Lotlines are further type-two actions under seeker, no environmental review is required. They did submit a fully completed short environmental assessment form, we recommend that the board classify this as a type-two action, and no need to conduct any further environmental review. The plat should be expanded to show the limits of the stream corridor overlay district and the aquifer overlay district associated with the parcels. The agricultural data statement probably needs to be revisited. A check of the current tax rolls suggests that several adjacent parcels are within Ag District 21 and should be notified. The form should be amended prior to circulation. Just for the record, it doesn't need to be an active farm in this town, what they have done custom in practice, if the property is in the Ag District, it has to they be notified, just, it's a belt and suspenders approach. So, and then other than that, it's, it's the standard issues, the owner's consent note will need to be signed and dated following date of last revision. The surveyor certification will need to be signed and sealed prior to the signature by the chairman. You'll need permission to file from the Dutchess County Department of Health, and at that time, I ask that the fire district confirm that May Knoll provides adequate, adequate emergency response access to the parcels. Subsequent to that, we did receive a letter from the Wausau Fire District, signed by Timothy M. Shea Chief, dated June 26th, 2024, which basically says it does provide adequate emergency access and there's no concerns on the fire district side. So, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, as far as I'm concerned, you could schedule the public hearing at, at a matter that's convenient for you and Judy, and move this ahead.
And I have nothing additional to add, except for to ask if the applicant can provide, if there's any, any records that you have that pertain to management of those, of the access roads, because it's a shared access road, that would be something that would be helpful for the board to have.
Do you have any information on maintaining May Knoll?
I maintain it.
He's maintained it for 50 years.
It's iffy where May Lane turns into May Knoll.
Are you not familiar? I'm very familiar.
So...
Is there an access easement from, by somebody else to get to their property?
We used to own all three houses on the road, owned the whole entire road, we sold the first lot. That first lot does not come into May Knoll, in order to go into their driveway, it comes off of May Lane.
Okay.
So, we own the two houses on May Knoll, they may change the road.
Shared driveway.
Yeah, no, no, we take care of it.
So, there should be some kind... If you were to sell one of the lots at some point...
If I read all the deeds correctly, and maybe it's just a question if you could submit all the deeds, they all reference a right-of-way.
Yeah.
And the, the ability to use the right-of-way, and it, it says for ingress and egress, it doesn't specify who's responsible for operation and maintenance, but typically in a case like this, it would be whoever benefits from it, so.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's in all the deeds and it runs back even before this, because there was a, I'm not sure, I, I, please forgive me, I, it's not, I don't know if it's a trailer park, or a manufactured home right next door.
Yeah.
And this kind of runs through a, a bit of that, so that whoever owns that kind of maintains the road and access. So, it might be a simple matter, Paul, if you see all the deeds involved.
It, it, it may be that, it may be, it may be just a simple condition for any future conveyance to one of the lots.
To make this...
Some sort of a share, you know, if, if you were to sell it, to make sure that there is some sort of an agreement between you and the neighbor.
First one, he's selling it too?
Pardon?
Yes.
So, if I was to sell it, I'd have to get an easement.
Right, they would have access to he rest ingress, him on the...
Right, so some sort of, just to confirm that sort of an agreement, and that would be for your own, you know...
Well, you, you can't have an easement to yourself until you sell it, so that, that's something they would have to consider when they, they go to sell it.
Right. Okay, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking I had two...
Yes, very, yeah, excellent, very good.
Because I would, I would agree that moving this forward to a public hearing, I don't know if it could be done for the August 14th meeting.
August 14th, we'll have a public hearing.
Yeah.
And we'll get this done for you.
And we could do a draft resolution for that as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Or is it motion?
Yes.
Yeah, but these are the motion. Who wants to make those?
I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for the Marshall Lot Lines Minor Subdivision for August 14th.
Can we add, I'd like to amend the motion and prepare a resolution.
Yes.
According to...
Yep.
And John, just a question, so it's the aquifer overlay district and the stream corridor district? It appears that the entire thing is in the aquifer, so would a note be sufficient?
Um, it, it could be, but I, I think you have to look, it, there's, there's an upland and there's a, there's a upland in primary bottom, and I think the line runs through one of the lots, so you might just want to look at the maps.
Don't mention that.
And, and then when it comes to the stream corridor overlay, that's 150 foot off the stream, which is the back property line.
Clearly through the property.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good deal.
Thank you.
We're welcome. See you soon. 14 Powderhouse Road, here we go, here's your step up.
Give me a minute to catch up, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, you got that, give him a couple minutes.
Do we approve the lots on that one?
Don't need a roll call, just a...
Aye.
Good catch. Mr. Chairman's moving us right along tonight.
He went around and around with this one.
Okay.
Name is James Pardo, I'm here to talk about the multifamily proposal at 14 Powderhouse Road. I have the, the comments from both John and Paul that are dated June 21st and June 19th, respectively, and it looks like the main question that would help move this application along is the matter of municipal water service versus a common septic. You know, we, this whole plan was predicated on a verbal approval that we could operate under the municipal septic definition by Tom Basile when he was working as the town code, and, and officer. And so, a number of the comments from both John and Paul have to do with this question about municipal sewage service versus common septic. And so, I'm hoping to figure out the best way forward to, you know, figure out that issue and, and figure out if we're able to move forward with that, that verbal approval we got.
Verbal approval from who?
Tom Basile.
I, I have, I have an interesting story to tell.
Yeah, I think he only worked for maybe 10 months.
I'm waiting in a daze.
All right, so, um, the project is arguably in the water district, as you all too painfully know, there is no sewer district in the town.
I was just gonna say, here it is.
So, depending upon how you define municipal, there is no municipal sewer. There, there's another strange phrase that hooks on, on a common septic. The fact that it's serving an apartment building, it's, it's just a septic system, it's not a common septic. Common typically means serving more than one lot. This is not serving more than one lot, it's serving the lot. The gentleman who made that determination was a previous building inspector, whose services to the town were terminated. It was a verbal, there are no records in the file. The, the person to make the determination would be your current building inspector, code enforcement officer, which is Mike Segalkin. Mike has looked at the matter, and in Mike's estimation, there is no municipal or common septic available for this lot, it is simply a septic. Having said that, then, it triggers a whole bunch of issues. The lot is six tenths of an acre. It's an existing lot of record, it was created and filed MAC by in 1972. According to your current code, the project would appear to have access to municipal water, but no common or municipal septic services, therefore, the minimum lot size would need to be 40,000 square feet. Don't have it. That would seem to trigger a trip to the ZBA to get a variance. Having said that, he proposes six dwelling units. The maximum density for multifamily dwellings in the HR District is two units per acre with municipal water or sewer service. Based on the lot size, he'd be entitled to 1.2 dwelling units, he's looking for six, that's again a trip to the ZBA. We talked about the verbal recommendation and the definitions, it would seem to me that before you can even entertain this application, he's gotta go have a chat with your ZBA and see if he can get a variance for lot size, and see if they can grant him a, an area variance for the differences to achieve the number of units that he wants to achieve. He does have a septic approval, so he's got the ability to put a septic system on this. We don't have a formal health department approval, what the health department does is they don't steal your thunder, they reach a point where they issue a letter which basically says there's no technical impediments, you come back with the rest of your approvals and we'll give you approval. So, technically, he's got that, but I, I think the best thing to do is, is send him off to the ZBA and, and see if he can achieve his necessary variances and then come back to see you folks.
Is a septic approved for six units or just one?
No, septic is approved for what he has designed for, it's, I think it's, I think it's eight bedrooms.
Nine bedrooms.
Nine bedrooms, yeah. It, it's for whatever his project is, John, but again, it's not, I don't have signed drawings, I just have, you've achieved a technical guideline, so, but I think, and I'll defer to Paul, there's nothing you folks can do, the application is technically incomplete, there's no approval, there's no path for you to issue an approval unless and until there's variances granted by the ZBA.
Sorry, may I just have you walk us through on the board, on the television, the site plan, because it appears as though you're just applying for something on lot four, correct?
Correct.
But the site plan shows a proposed four-bedroom duplex on lot five, which is .615 acres, and so it's a little bit confusing as to...
That's a different plan than I got, too.
Why this is showing another building on the adjacent lot as part of your proposal?
So, we wanted to show both parcels, because we're developing them together, and we're planning to share a driveway, and so we wanted to show you what was happening on both lots, just to, to fill in a bigger picture of, of, of the, the development.
Okay, so the, the applicant, the...
Because the other, the other parcel...
Lot five is not, you're not submitting for a site plan?
No.
You've already gotten a determination from the building inspector that this is as a right?
Yeah, that's two family homes allowed by right for the HR zoning on that parcel.
Even though it says proposed four-bedroom duplex, that's what, four, two bedrooms on each floor, two units?
Correct.
Do you have this?
No.
Here, thank you.
Yeah, we, we updated that one since we submitted the original one, because we got the, the septic.
And that's really a separate septic.
Correct, correct.
So, own...
That, that site plan was prepared by Renia, because they're doing both and just wanted to show the whole, both parcels as a whole, and that was the most recent one that Renia prepared, since, you know, we've been doing the duplex separately.
And you're gonna share a driveway, the only thing that's shared is the driveway?
Correct, correct.
Which is coming off of Powderhouse or Yellow City?
Correct, Powderhouse.
I mean, or, old 22.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we don't get the approvals for the sixth unit, the plan would be to just do another duplex and have two separate driveways.
Fair enough.
So...
Okay.
Just for my...
You're the developer?
I'm the builder and developer, yeah.
What is the lot number?
Uh, the parcel is 128184.
Thank you.
Just for my own information, is this the lot where they demolished a house recently?
Correct, there was a manufactured home on it that was totaled three years ago, I think, from that twister tornado, and we finished the demolition of that and removed the pole barn, that was there illegally and, and, you know, abridging to both parcels.
Okay, I'm familiar with the lot.
Yeah.
And on, on, just another question on the site plan, John, I'm sure you'll go through this in significant detail, but there's an indication here that says reputed water line, is that because you're just not sure that there's actually a water line there?
The town, when we were demoing the old, the existing home, the town came out and they had to redo some of the water lines, because they were undersized and hadn't been updated in 30-plus years, and so the town's not entirely sure where exactly the, the shut-off valves are.
Okay.
But they believe they, they drenched them back and are in that area.
It's gonna be difficult.
Okay, all right, yeah, because it just sort of like ends, like it, there's dotted lines, it says, and then it doesn't really go anywhere.
Yeah.
It doesn't connect to anything in the road, in Powderhouse or on old 22, it just sort of runs and then stops in the midpoint in the adjacent property. On lot three?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think there's, they'll have some, some, a fun time trying to find where exactly the water will come in.
Got it.
But there, there is water service there.
Okay.
So, you know what you do, you go to the ZBA and... So you know what you do? You go to the ZBA, they go back, and you give your rules, and then we move forward.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Silan, we're getting some silly updates.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Patrick O'Leary on behalf of Silan. I'm here two reasons. Provide a quick update. I met with the Whalens last Wednesday, just before the 4th of July. They're ready and prepared. We're in the process of clearing the low-lying brush out there so that we can stake out the fence and come to a conclusion between both parties. Mr. Whalen would like to move the fence back over onto the Silan land as opposed to his land. We're fine with that. We're going to meet out there in the next couple of weeks, once it's cleared, to stake out the fence. Once that's done, we can proceed with the landscaping between 22 and the Silan facility. We know it's a concern for the board. We're going to try to get that taken care of in the next six, eight weeks, somewhere in that timeframe. Hopefully get it established before the fall growing season. And I think we've provided all the information to date that has been requested by Attorney Van Cott and John. And we'd like to verify that you're not seeking any additional information and that we're in a position to potentially move this forward at this time.
John, do you have any?
Well, yeah, I think the major thing that was left open is, and I think we had worked with, through and with Nina Peet to, it's their operational plan, if you will. That was the major piece and we were looking for some clarifications. They updated it. I think the most recent one, pardon me, I got so many copies here that I I think the most recent one is one dated May 28th, 2024. And I believe that's been circulated. You don't have that one?
I have it in front of me, but I, that just, this is the first time I'm seeing it.
Okay. So I think they addressed all your concerns and just going to point out a few things. They clarified some stuff, but I think if you jump to page six, they went through and they revisited their schedules with regards to when things could be used, added some clarifications. And one of the things we had asked for, we had talked about is, is getting some sense of, they had used the term daylight hours. And so after much ado and trying, trying to be as flexible as possible, I've come to learn that there are a number of state regulations and other things that use daylight hours. And for instance, anybody who hunts, their hunting licenses, you're allowed to hunt during daylight hours. That daylight hours has a specific definition under the, under the code. So rather than trying to pin somebody down at daylight hours, daylight hours is defined as the hours between official sunrise and sunset as determined by the National Weather Service. So there's a chart available at the National Weather Service. You can go and gives you sunrise and sunset. That seemed to be the fairest way to put that to bed, particularly during the summer, so that there's no question. And other than that, I think, Nina, if I, if I went through all your comments, I think they addressed them all in that, in the most recent one. And I'm sorry that it's the first time you've seen it because it got issued a while ago, I thought. But anyway, the other issue that has come up, and it's worthy of talking about because one of the things we were asked to do was start to put together a resolution. And we started to address some of the facts, but I think it's important that we discuss how the building inspector has approached this. Unfortunately, the gentleman who was part of the previous application and issued an unwritten opinion authorized the release of building permits on this site. Mike inherited the situation. So they're, each of the individual courts have their own building permit, if you will. And the reason they have building permits for courts, there is actually a physical structure. They're not, they're not just paved on the ground. There are elevated structures, there are fences, there are other things. And at the time, there was electrical work associated with it, which we all know was not supposed to be there. So when talking to Mike, trying to figure out what we would do if they got their necessary approvals, how would we start to close this out? In other words, how would we make it legal to use these things? Typically for a court or something like that, Mike would not issue a TCO. A TCO, Temporary Certificate of Occupancy. Temporary Certificate of Occupancy is generally issued when something is substantially complete, but there's definable minor items that need to be corrected for which you can put a timeframe to. So most certificates of, temporary certificates of occupancy are granted for like a 30-day period. Mike would prefer not to do that because if you look at the courts, and Paul and I have discussed it, one of the things that made the courts approvable was the landscaping and noise and acoustic barriers that were part of the approval associated with Whalen. So in trying to do that, what we came up with is a scenario whereby in order to get and complete the permitting on the courts, we would need a couple of things. We would need an interim ASBIL. In other words, you've got a partial ASBIL last time. But we would need a real ASBIL, put together by a surveyor, making sure everything was correct, an interim, showing what had been completed. And that we would further need that the fencing located on Whalen's land, as Patrick has stated, and the trees and the other screening would need to be in place and would need to be certified as being completed before Mike would issue a CO for any of the courts. Going forward, if you look at the facilities to be constructed, typically you would issue an independent building permit for the hockey rink, which would then say you would get a CO for the hockey rink and so on and so forth. So what, what happens is when you look at what's left to accomplish, what we would do is tie issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for the last structure to be permitted. And we would tie that to making sure we have permission to operate the water and sewer facilities, making sure that the highway work permit has been issued and the work completed to the satisfaction of DOT, that any unauthorized lighting fixtures are either permanently disconnected or they've returned to the board to get an approval, which that's up to them. And the certificate of, the final structure, then we would get a complete ASBIL. Certify and a certification from an engineer that everything had been completed in accordance with the plans and specifications as approved. That's our current thinking, but we didn't want to commit it to writing and issue it to anybody unless we got you folks to buy in. But the two things I think they've addressed is the operations. I think they addressed Nina's concerns. They changed some of the language. And we've clarified some of the timeframes. And then what, under what conditions would, would you want to see approvals issued for this? Did I miss anything, Paul?
Good overview of it and the thinking behind the landscaping as well was because the domes are sort of, are the only real new thing that the board is focusing on, that that landscaping, which is intended to provide screening of the facility, would also be in place before a CO would be issued for the domes. And that would hopefully, hopefully that work would be done before they're erected this year. We're, in the, I was out there last week getting it started. I'll be out there again next week, meeting with landscapers to start putting the
So when would you anticipate that work starting again? How long would it take?
I apologize, I missed the beginning.
When would you anticipate that work starting and how long would it take to get the screening placed?
I anticipate, I'm going to suggest toward the end of July, we'll get the work started because we got to get the survey. We got to get the fence staked out. We got to arrive at an agreement with Mr. Whalen on how we're going to deal with a couple jogs in the fence where he wants to move things around. So that's going to take a little time. Get the fence installed. We have a little retaining to do on the backside of the fence there that needs to be constructed. And then install the landscaping. So I'm thinking if we get started around toward the end of July, we should be done with what I'll call infrastructure fence, retaining walls, things of that nature by the end of August. And in September, we should be installing the landscape. Wouldn't want to install in an August timeframe anyways if it's that hot. It's just not the appropriate planting season.
This is for John or Paul. So they're operating without any sort of TCO or CO right now?
I cannot say whether the courts are being used. I believe they are. But they are being used at their own risk and there is no coverage and there is no
So we have no exposure knowingly?
It's totally at their risk. It has not been closed.
I lived in California.
Yeah.
Worry about that a lot.
The last time I appeared before you, I said I would go out in person to look at the paddle ball, pickleball and padel courts relative to the lighting standards. Because the statement was made that the stanchions are integral to the design of the courts themselves. And they actually are. You can't, well, if we do not get an approval for a revised lighting plan, what they'll do is remove the heads off. And I've suggested, you know, you put four planters up there. I don't know what you do to finish it off, but it was integral to the courts itself. It's not something that somebody bolted on. It's actually a relatively efficient design because the courts have poles that support the glass walls, things of that nature. And they actually ran the wiring through it. It would be an integral part of the kit. We will remove it if we don't have a revised photometrics plan approved by the planning board. For now, they're disconnected. They're not in use and they will not be in use whatsoever unless the board approves it.
Just again, what are you asking us to do this evening? What are you recommending?
We're just asking for your conceptual approval of that approach.
Of a piecemeal approach. In other words, a two-step approach. Issuing a TC, issuing a certificate of occupancy for the courts, the building permits that have been issued, subject to certain conditions. And then fully approving the entire project and then issuing the final CO, conditioning a final CO on other factors. So that they, because this was not approved in phases. And the best I can gather from discussions with Patrick, they're not intending to build it in phases. Once they start, they'd like to march right through the process. They kind of got stalled. But I guess there's a transition in management, as you sort of suggested. And there's a transition that involves Silan somehow, too. So what they're, they're anxious to get started so they can bring it to completion.
We'd like to submit for the building permit.
And Mike is, Wes Dahl is
The court plans and everything were all reviewed. We have nothing else, he has nothing else in front of him yet to review because he won't accept anything because there is no signed site plan.
The one, one concerns I've been listening to from some of the people around us, including some of the residents in the area, is lighting. What is your plan for lighting? Do you have a plan for lighting?
There was a plan that was part of the package originally.
There is a plan, Jim, and there is, there is, there's a complete photometric plan and lighting plan. And if you read the operational guidelines, all lighting is supposed to be a half hour after the last activity, I believe, except for safety and security lighting. So that's all shown on the plan. So it won't be
So the illumination light is acceptable?
Yes.
According to our standards?
That's correct, sir.
We also, as part of this site plan, it says lighting fixtures included as part of construction package for courts, lights will be removed or Silan will request a site plan modification prior to activating. All lighting associated with the courts has been disconnected and is not operational and will remain unoperational until removed or as part of a site plan modification. So all of these lights around here, I think, were just part of the package of installation, if I'm not stating it. And so none of those will be illuminated.
But there is, there is site lighting. There will be building-mounted lighting. The interior of the hockey rink will be lighted. But there are criteria as to when certain lights have to go off. And then there are criteria on which lights they can maintain for safety and security.
We do agree that
And all those, and all those security lights are within our standards?
That's correct, sir. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions on the revised operations plan. The, under, on page two, under platform tennis courts outdoor, it says the platform tennis courts will be reserved for civic groups from 2:00 to 5:00 or dusk. I think that should probably be dark to match your, your actual operating plan, your operating schedule. So if you could change that to dark from dusk. It says platform tennis courts are not in operation from May to October, which is neither here nor there because none of the facilities at Silan would be open to community groups between Memorial Day and Labor Day. So I think just some clarity and consistency throughout that plan, throughout this, number two, page two, and all of those. Just say like, it's open from, you know, for community use from January to Memorial Day, closed from Labor Day to, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, open from Labor Day to December. Because later on, it says outdoor tennis courts and pickleball courts will be open, blah, blah. First Monday of each month, May through October. But you're closed to community members from essentially May through September. So that's, it would really only be open from Memorial, from Labor Day to October 1st, I would imagine, something like that, right?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry I missed that.
It's community, civic groups.
Civic groups.
Yeah, civic groups. So just like, so that somebody can just pick this up and be like, hey, I'm a civic group. When can I go? And they don't need to like do a lot of calendar looking.
Don't need a lot of math.
Right, yeah. Like I think that would just be helpful for civic groups that are proposing or hoping to be able to use your cool facilities. The other thing is on the summertime operating schedule, it says tennis courts, and then it's redlined out and says inside Ice House. Are there tennis courts inside the Ice House?
Well, yeah, what you have is the ice rink comes typically is taken down in the summertime.
Okay.
So you have this open area under the pavilion that, you know, they may put a couple basketball hoops up there. They may line a tennis court inside there or something like that. So that's why it's referred to as
The way this is proposed is the ice rink is, they're going to put a rather large concrete slab down and then the ice rink gets built on the concrete slab. So when they take the ice rink down and remove the accessories associated with it, they have this rather large concrete slab inside a building. So they wanted the flexibility to use it. That's where that came from.
So the same, so the summertime operating schedule that refers to tennis courts inside Ice House is the same tennis courts that are referred to in the wintertime operating schedule as tennis courts covered? Those are the same, one in the same? Or there's two additional courts?
There are not one in the same.
No, the tennis courts covered would be the ones that are in the dome.
Oh.
Yes.
So in the wintertime, the domes go up. And the two tennis courts that are identified, tennis courts open air two in the summer become tennis courts covered two in the winter.
Got it. Okay, that's fair. And thank you for the clarity.
Will civic groups be able to hold fundraisers? In other words, we want to
I don't think you can answer that.
Have a fundraiser, post some tickets and be able to sign on the
It's open to use for the civic groups. I don't think it identifies, it says it's open to use for the civic groups. It didn't identify whether or not it could be used
For whatever purpose they're using this for.
Specific purpose.
I think the earlier version capped the number.
It caps the number, yes.
It still does, yeah?
Yeah, we have to.
Where is that?
Right, because there's limited parking.
Yeah.
It has to be kept. There's limited parking, limited staff, limited everything that's associated with it. So that's a necessity.
No more than 50 guests with 40 vehicles. Got it. This says there's an attached parking exhibit, I would imagine, at some I would imagine at some point that was attached?
Yeah, that, that was submitted and attached.
No, it's, it wasn't, it's one of those things that got dropped off because we, we started quibbling about all the language. So we'll have to, the final version, we'll have to get that parking exhibit back. Because remember we identified where those 50 spaces were?
That's, yeah, we counted them out because there was like two staff or two golf cart spaces or something that, you know, weren't parking spots.
Yep.
Any individual in any way, acting in any way detrimental to the enjoyment of the facilities by others will be removed from the property.
So in other words
Warning to you all misbehaviors.
Anything else you need to address with this?
I, you know, we'd like, we'd like to move this ahead so that we can pull the other building permits and do the entire
So what, what, what Paul and I were hoping you would do is nod to the concept and allow us to put the final form to a draft resolution to have in your hands prior to the next meeting.
Perfect.
What's your part of the board? What do you want to do?
That sounds funny.
I need a sound, a sound approach.
That's fair, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, folks.
Resubmit this with the revision.
Yeah, I'll go through it again. I have not been through it like as everybody's been doctoring it and it's been going back and forth. Because I can't even keep up with the changes, but I think we're there now, so.
As engineers, we usually wait till the attorneys get out of the way and then put it back in English.
John said that, I did not
Believe me, I hear you, brother.
They're trying to get it in trouble, aren't they?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As that being said, we have one other, two other things actually. First, we need the approval of minutes of six, 12, 24. Any corrections or deletions or anything that adjusted them in? Six, 12, 24. Do you second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the other thing is there will be no meeting in the, the two weeks from now. We'll have a meeting in August. Someone will be on vacation, so.
Night.
That's that, okay?
Cool.
So it will be on July 28?
Four.
Four, or August 28?
Correct.
Or August 28?
So as that being said, I need a motion for adjournment? Do you second?
I'll second that motion.
See you all next month.